Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, December 4th, and we're at the Township Board of Trustees meeting. I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have this evening Dawson D. Maria that will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start with the roll call. Trustee Bassano?
Here.
Trustee Kryzminski is absent. Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith is absent. Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here, and Supervisor Dunn is absent. In the absence of Trustee Kryzminski, Trustee Smith, and Supervisor Dunn, I would ask that their names not be called if a roll call vote is necessary.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Goodhue, Treasurer Goodhue, support by Trustee Bassano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we would have to appoint someone to chair the meeting in the absence of the supervisor. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that our clerk run the, chair the meeting.
Support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have one proposed add-on under engineering, item 18, request to install street lighting along Fairchild Road from Hall Road to 21 Mile Road. This information was passed to the board members this afternoon by the Engineering Department. Other than that add-on, I do not have any others.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take out, we do not have the votes to go into closed session. We have to have two-thirds of our sitting board members under, under MCL 15.268H and 15.268E, we have to have five of the seven sitting members, not just present, to vote to go into closed session, so I think we are going to have to remove all three closed-session items.
We will postpone them to the next meeting. Is that a motion?
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion to pause closed-session items 20, 21, and 22 until the December 18th board meeting.
Motion by Trustee Bassano?
Support.
Support by Trustee Nevers to postpone closed-session items until December 18th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we have the approval of the bills. Any deletions, corrections, or objections to the bill run?
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with the bill runs, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Trustee Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Goodhue to approve the bill run as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is approval of the previous meeting minutes from November 20th. Any corrections, deletions to the meeting minutes presented?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from November the 20th, 2019, as presented.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue to approve the previous meeting minutes from November 20th, 2019.
Support.
Support by Trustee Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Onto the consent agenda items. Any deletions, corrections, or items you wish to have moved to unfinished business, or to new business?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Support.
Supported by Trustee Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have public comments on agenda items only. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, there's a three-minute time limit. We ask that you come to the podium and state your name.
Jay Lampke, 46759 Millpoint. I'd like to speak to item 18, the lighting on Fairchild. Several months ago when this was first brought up, I was very happy, the immediate response from the board. Ms. Dunn immediately had the sheriff set up their speed limit thing, and I believe that really slowed down traffic for quite a while. I'd like to see that again. And Ms. Posey and Mr. Van Tiflin have done lots of work prepping for the streetlights and the sidewalks. It's a very dangerous situation. Kids are walking up and down that street to school. There's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights, and when the snow gets plowed, there's not even shoulders to walk on. They have to walk in the road. So I very much would like to see you pass item 18. Thank you.
Thank you.
I too would like to talk about item 18 on the agenda. I live in the area, and it's very dangerous for children, let alone adults, to walk down Fairchild because it's not lit well. I would love to see the board approve the street lighting for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on agenda items? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Number 12, the approval of Eagle Scout resolution for Dawson Robert D. Maria. Mr. D. Maria, would you like to stand in front of us, please? You can come right up to the front. At a regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Township of Macomb, County of Macomb, State of Michigan, held in Township Hall in said township on the fourth day of December 2019 at 7:00 PM, the following preamble and resolution were offered by the Township Board. Whereas Dawson Robert D. Maria began his scouting career in first grade with PAC 183 at Cheyenne Elementary, and continued his scouting career with Troop 149 of Macomb. With Troop 149, he distinguished himself by earning 38 merit badges, the Polar Bear Award, and the World Conservation Award. His own actions, achievements, and high morale standards have made him a role model and example for other scouts in his troop and local council to follow. Whereas Dawson Robert D. Maria has earned numerous other awards, such as the George Thomas Award, Order of the Arrow, and Order of the Arrow Brotherhood. And whereas Dawson Robert D. Maria exemplifies the best of what scouting is about by being active at Dakota High School, where he plays football and lacrosse, is a member of St. Isidore Church, and enjoys teaching others about the virtues of hunting, camping, and spending time with family. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Macomb, County of Macomb, Michigan, speaking on behalf of all Macomb Township citizens as follows, that by these presents, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees recognizes the dedication, commitment, and personal sacrifices Dawson Robert D. Maria has made to obtain the rank of Eagle Scout and become the 61st Eagle Scout of Troop 149. And be it further resolved that the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby commends and publicly extends its congratulations to Dawson Robert D. Maria on his elevation to Eagle Scout, and further extends its best wishes to Dawson in all his future endeavors. Now therefore, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby proclaims, Sunday, January 5th, 2020, Dawson Robert D. Maria Day in Macomb Township. Congratulations. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution to declare December 4th Dawson Robert D. Maria Day?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Roll call vote. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Will adopt that resolution. Thank you. Next on the presentations, we have item number 13, which is Plant Moran's presentation of the financials for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
Thank you very much. Good evening to the Board of Trustees. I'm very happy to be here. My name is Lisa Planca, partner with the governmental firm Plant and Moran. Pleased to be the auditors once again this year and present the results of the June 30, 2019 audit. As we've discussed in previous years, the audit process itself is a fairly involved one. We're here for about three weeks onsite, and we always appreciate the courtesy and the preparedness that Stacy Smith and the Finance Department put together, and the Treasurer and the Treasurer's Department, because there is a lot that goes into doing an audit of this sort. First and foremost, our opinion on the financial statements that you've received in front of you is what is referred to as an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, meaning the financial statements that you have in front of you are presented in accordance with all of the rules put forth by the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards that would be applicable to the township. So that is the opinion that is the highest level of assurance that we can give, and certainly what you'd expect to see every year in your financial report. What that opinion doesn't really tell you is anything about the financial results themselves, or about how the township is doing as a whole, but I'm pleased to once again say that the township is in excellent financial condition. A few highlights from 2019, we did see the general funds, the main operating fund of the township decrease fund balance by about 2.4 million, but that was a planned decrease, and a lot of that was related to transfers made to the municipal streets funds, which invested just over $4.5 million in road projects. So we see the money being put to work and being used to improve roads within the township. And that was less of a decrease than was budgeted for the, for the general fund itself. There was a bond issuance in 2019 primarily for construction of new public service buildings, which will take place in future years. And also, we see the Water and Sewer Fund continues to be in a very well-position for future capital needs or unexpected emergencies. So again, overall, a very strong report financially, and we can see that the township is looking to address capital needs, which a lot of communities still are struggling to be able to do. Another issue that we've spoken about a lot in recent years is looking at retiree obligations, so both for pension and health care. When we look at the funded status of your pension and retiree health care plans, the pension is funded at about 73%, retiree health care at just over 100%. So again, these are a snapshot in time. This changes based on the valuation of investments on a day-to-day basis, but again, there are many communities that are struggling and well below those funded percentages. So again, demonstrating the township's commitment to addressing the needs. And then one other thing that I wanted to make sure to point out, in addition to presenting a financial report, we do also provide every year a letter of comments about the audit process and about any internal control suggestions. And I'm pleased to report the township's history of having addressed those, and taking those suggestions, and implementing those best practices, and continuing to look for ways to improve processes and internal controls, particularly those we've pointed out in the course of the audit. And in this year's report, we did not have any material internal control weaknesses to, to deliver to the board, so we're glad to be able to give that report as well. So all in all, I would say a very, very positive report, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa, very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I would also like to thank all the team in Macomb Township that worked closely with Lisa's team to accomplish this. I know it went smoothly, and everybody was prepared, so I thank the Finance Department for that as well, and Treasurer's Department.
Yes, thank you very much.
Do I have a motion to receive and file Plant Moran's financial statement for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Bassano, supported by Treasurer Goodhue, to receive and file the Plant Moran financial statement for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the request to approve the contract modification number four, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation contract 02490162 in the amount of $489,950. Mr. Wengland?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you asking for a contract modification number four. This will be for Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services. And basically what this is, is a request to extend their contract into the year 2020. We had a good relationship with them. We had good quotes from them. They did good work for us, and they've agreed to hold the line for 2020 pricewise. And by doing so, we also save money and with our engineering firm of not having to rebid this, re-advertise, and those types of things. So we are making a recommendation to move forward for 2020 in the amount of $489,950.00. Water and Sewers recommending this as well as engineering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wengland. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract modification number four, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation contract 02490162. The net change is $489,950.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Trustee Nevers to approve the contract modification number four, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation contract 02490162 in the amount of $489,950. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Wengland, I believe you're number 15 as well.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Item 15 is a request by Water and Sewer for, excuse me, for change order number one for the 23 Mile Road water main replacement project. And basically, the bulk of this change order, as you can see in your memo provided, is in item number 29. And what item 29 is, is basically, the Department of Roads changed the scope of the project on us, which, and what I mean by that is, they required this entire trench, this entire project, to be backfilled with sand. And that was not in the original specs, if you will. So this change order would have been applicable to the second bidder, the third bidder, anybody that would have come along. So some of these other items are a result of that change as well. And we are recommending approval of change order number one in the amount of $150,843.63. Water and Sewers reviewed this as well as engineering.
Mr. Wengland, if I may, I believe when, after they dug down, they realized that it needed the sand, and that's why it wasn't originally in the specs. Is that correct, or am I?
No, I think the Department of Roads changed the game plan, if you will, which changed the whole scope of the project.
Okay. But it was necessary to be done?
Yes.
In order to continue with the project? Okay, thank you.
The second bidder would have had this stipulation, the third bidder, anybody we have awarded this contract to would have had this. Yes.
Anyone else have any questions or discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, 23 Mile Road water main replacement. The new contract amount is $749,193.63, which is a net change of $150,843.63.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue to approve the change order number one in the amount of $193.00, no, $749.193.63 for project number 181263.
I'll support that.
Supported by Trustee Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next item is from the Engineering Department. Item number 16, request to approve release of easement for municipal utilities for storm sewer in, is it Chair? Char?
Char Estates.
Char Estates Site condominium. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, this particular easement was recorded by the developer in error. It's really not necessary for this project, so to clean up the record going forward for the development, we are recommending that this easement be released. So recommending approval. It has been reviewed by Engineering as well as legal counsel.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion by the Board?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the release of the easement for the municipal utilities for storm sewer in Char Estates Site condominium.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Trustee Nevers to approve the release of, release of easement for municipal utilities for storm sewer in Char Estates Site condominium. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. That motion carries. Item number 17 is with Mr. Van Tiflin again.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, this is the same thing as the previous easement. It's just a water main easement versus a storm sewer easement. It was recorded in error by the developer. We're recommending approval of the release.
Any questions, discussion from the Board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the release of easement for public utilities for water main in Char Estates and Site condominium.
Motion by Trustee Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Goodhue to approve release of easement for public utilities for water main in Char Estates Site condominium. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Onto item number 18, which was the add-on to request to install street lighting along Fairchild Road from Hall Road to 21 Mile Road. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing this item to be added on. This was always intended to be on this agenda, but with everything going on in engineering and planning right now, it was inadvertently left off the agenda. But we thought it was important enough to bring to the Board tonight, so you could act on it if, if you, you know, so chose. Earlier this year, a resident had requested that the township install streetlights in this area. This is, leads to the campus for Lance Cruz North Middle School and High School North. Safety, obviously, is a concern. It was brought up again tonight. This is also an area that the township has approved, Township Board has approved sidewalks to be installed in 2021, 2022, to accommodate those kids that want to walk to that school complex. So since the request came in, I've been working with the, with DTE to put together an estimate. This is a little bit different than the scope of work that we did at 21 in Heidenreich, in that there are existing DTE utility poles all along that stretch. There are no, very few DTE utility poles in this area. There's some AT&amp;T poles, a couple of DTE poles, but they, in order to get the lighting that is necessary, they have to install new poles. And it's a combination of removing the AT&amp;T poles and replacing them with DTE, and combining everything onto one pole. That's mainly south of the railroad tracks. North of railroad tracks, be brand-new poles. So if you look at the price, it's, it's not that much cheaper than we paid for essentially four miles of street lighting at 21 in Heidenreich, but it has to do with the pole installation. They can't just hang those Cobra lights off of existing poles. So with that, the estimate that we received from DTE, that we have to deposit with them for the construction is $55,442.72. And then the annual lamp charge with the township would be responsible for is $6,687.36. I've reviewed this, and I'm recommending approval if the Board wants to proceed with this.
Mr. Van Tiflin, can you repeat that amount, $55,000?
Yep. The lump sum that we have to deposit with DTE before they'll commence work is
I'll make a motion that...
I just wanted to comment on something. I just wanted to share with the Board that Mr. Van Tiflin and I went out there approximately eight months ago, I would say, to just assess the situation, since it was brought, brought to his attention. I had a resident that contacted me. Since that time, I've been there in the morning, and I've been there in the evening, and I've been there on a Friday evening during football season, and it is incredibly dark in this area. And I definitely think it's a public safety issue. We've also looked into possibly trying to utilize any type of poles that did exist, and just add lighting to it, which we found not possible. The landscaping in that area is overdeveloped, so any type of lighting could potentially be blocked by existing trees. So that wasn't an option. So we did try and find the least expensive option. It ended up being that we would have to put all new poles in, unfortunately, but I think the benefit to all the students outweighs the cost. And we also want, I wanted to mention that we are working with Macomb County Department of Roads, that when we get to that point, there will be a crosswalk included that currently does not exist. So there are some great advancements that will happen in that area. I think the lighting is a major improvement. They have, between the two schools, there's 2,511 students that come, and there's a lot of foot traffic there. So since we've agreed to do the sidewalk program in that area and close all the gaps, they've had even more traffic going to the schools by foot, but it doesn't allow for safety with lighting. So I just wanted to share all that, because we've been working on this for quite some time, and I did a lot of research on it to justify the expense, and it's definitely something that is needed over there. That's all I wanted to share. Did anybody else want to share anything?
I have a question, though. Do you want the motion in two parts, or is it, can it be together?
It could be together.
It can be together?
Yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the street lighting on Fairchild in the amount of $55,442.72, along with the lamp charge of $6,687.36. Did I get my numbers correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue to approve, to install street lighting along Fairchild Road from Hall Road to 21 Mile Road at Macomb Township's cost of $55,442.72, and also for the lamp light charge for $6,687.36. I'll support the motion. Support by Clerk Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And we'll move on to the Fire Department, which is item number 19, and that is the request to purchase extrication equipment for $30,000. Chief Phillips?
Members of the Board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase extrication equipment, also known as the Jaws of Life, for the new Squad 4 that's currently under production and scheduled for delivery the first quarter of 2020. I'm recommending the battery-powered tools instead of the traditional tools that operate from a power unit and hydraulic hoses. The battery-operated tools provide us with more flexibility and are easier to operate, and if approved, this will be the fourth set of these tools that we have in service. Due to territorial agreements, we're only able to purchase the Hearst extrication tools from one dealer that covers the entire state of Michigan, and due to that, we're unable to obtain three bids. The total cost for the cutter, spreader, RAM, and the AC power supply adapter is $30,000, and I was notified that the price will increase after January 1st. The purchase was included in the fire improvement budget for the current fiscal year, and with that, I would request approval to purchase the extrication equipment from Apollo Fire Equipment at a total cost of $30,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Madam Chair. Chief, I just got to ask you a question. Of course, I'm going to support this. But since we're talking about this and what these are usually used for, I don't know if it's just an awareness now or social media, but there seems to be quite a few accidents recently in our township. Is there an uptick or not, or is it just hitting the newspaper more? It seems like, you know, there was a day the other day, seemed like we had three, four accidents. Is that part of why we're trying to buy some new equipment, too? Do you think?
Well...
You wouldn't be causing those accidents, but it just seems like I've heard about quite a few accidents very recently.
There's an increase in accidents. I think a lot due to distracted driving, but the number of accidents that we respond to increases year over year as the number of residents increase, traffic increases, accidents are increasing. And so, the current set that we have on the apparatus that's currently in service is about 11 or 10 to 11 years old, so they're due to be replaced, and these are much lighter than... they're easier for the firefighters to operate, we don't have to rely on hoses, hoses, excuse me, that limit our reach or anything else. These are strictly battery-powered devices, and they're much more flexible and easier, and the firefighters have requested that we purchase these and not the traditional units with the hoses.
Chief, are the batteries able to be plugged in or recharged, or do you have to replace them ever so often?
They're in the apparatus current, they're on chargers. We have spare batteries, and we also have an adapter that if the batteries were to go dead while we're using it, we plug into electric that's on all the apparatus, so we continue to operate. The life of the batteries are about seven to eight years, and then we have to replace them.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the extrication equipment at $30,000.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Nevers to approve the purchase of extrication equipment for Apollo Fire Equipment at a total cost of $30,000. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries.
And if I could just add one comment for the residents, as we enter the holiday season, we have fireplaces that are being utilized as the weather gets colder, furnaces. The Fire Department does have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. We don't want anyone to go without it. If someone's in need of it, a resident is in need of either one of those, please contact the Fire Department. We will send a crew out with smoke detectors or carbon monoxide. If we need to, we will also install them. If they need batteries, we have those. So we're asking that all the residents make sure those are operating. There's been several fires around us that have resulted in deaths, and we do not want that. So please contact the Fire Department, we will do everything we can as fast as possible to get out there with a crew with working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 20 is the Finance Department, and it's the purchasing policy and procedures. Ms. Smith?
Good evening. The Finance Department is committed to promoting effective, professional, and consistent procurement of goods and services for Macomb Township. This helps to assure the public that the best value is received for their tax dollars while also giving a fair opportunity to vendors to compete for township business. To be successful, the policy and procedures must be supported by proper attitudes and cooperation, not only from the Board of Trustees and department heads, but from every employee in the township. Highlighted purchasing policy changes that are included are, from the previous version, are clarification of the different methods of procurement, such as when to obtain a quote, invitation to bid, request for proposal, cooperative agreement, sole source, and emergency procurements. Sections added to address recreation service agreements, multi-year contracts, alternate contracts, construction contracts, and leases. Expanded general guidelines, such as sections on purchase orders, contract administration, right of non-disclosure and proprietary information, right to protest, and exclusions. There also included methods of disposal for both real and personal property. Definitions of important terms were added to the glossary. Detailed procedures were added to further promote consistency throughout departments and allow Board of Trustees to be confident that all departments are following the same guidelines. Myself and the purchasing specialist strongly recommend that all Board of Trustees and employees adhere to the purchasing policy so as to provide transparency and assurance to both the public and the vendors that the process and policy is followed for all expenditures throughout the township. I'm here before you tonight to ask for approval of the revised purchasing policy dated December 4th, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Van...
Madam Chair, based on the microphone, that was a very strong recommendation.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Smith for her time and efforts into this policy. We've been talking about it, I think, for about two years now, and there was some tweaking that needed to be done. We lost our purchasing specialist in the interim, which did delay the process, but she did work a lot with Mr. Assorti to accomplish this, and a lot of hours and effort was put into it, so I just want to thank you for getting that done before the end of the year was our goal, and we're making it one meeting short, so good job. That's all I want to say.
Madam Chair, unless there's any questions, upon the recommendation of the Finance Director and Purchasing Specialist, I would like to make a motion that all Board of Trustees and employees adhere to the purchasing policy so as to provide transparency and assurance to both the public and the vendors that the process and policy is followed for all expenditures throughout the township.
Motion by Trustee Busenow.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Nevers to approve the revised purchasing policy dated December 4th, 2019, and that all Board of Trustees and employees adhere to the policy as to provide transparency and assurance to both the public and the vendors that the process and policy is followed for all expenditures throughout the township. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
I also would like to introduce our new purchasing specialist, Janet Solomon, and thank her for her hard work in getting this booklet and packet together, and welcome her aboard. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. If anybody wishes to speak to on a non-agenda item, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name. That's a first. Seeing none. I'll move on to Board comments. I'll start with trustee comments. Would any trustee have any comments they'd like to share this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, real quick, first of all, I want to thank all the department heads I talked to and employees that I talked to during the week, anytime or in between every meeting, anytime I have questions, always accommodating. A couple that I talked to quite frequently, you know, made motions tonight, Mr. Van Tiflin, Mr. Wengland, both of you respond very, very quickly to needs that residents bring to me in the township, and I know that, you know, sometimes working for a governmental unit, especially with some of the stuff we went through, isn't always easy, but both of you and everybody, every department head employee that I've talked to in the last few months have been, have been great. So thank you for the work you do every day. I'm only a part-time trustee, so I'm not in the building every day. The real, the real work of the township gets done between 8:00 and 5:00, you know. I've said repeatedly, what we do up here is just a small snapshot, so thanks for everything you guys do. It makes my job easier responding to residents, for sure. The other thing I just, I just want to point out that yesterday was National Day of Giving, and I was very, very impressed by so many things that I saw online, so many things that I saw in person, of the giving nature of this community. I know we're not the only community that does this, but we do have a lot of blessings in this community, and people do share their time and talent and resources. I was on both ends of it, recipient of some of that, and was able to give, too, but thank you for every township resident for giving to some great causes in the township, and it's one of the reasons I love living in this community.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes. We have sent out the winter tax bills, everybody, most people received them on Monday. If you did not receive a bill, please let us know. We have no control over the mail, but you are still responsible even though you do not get a bill. We'd be happy to send you a copy if you did not receive one. This year, we had 2,573 parcels that had delinquent water transferred to taxes. It's a difference of 141 less than last year, and that doesn't sound like a lot, but we're getting there, we're getting people's attention that they need to pay their water bills before they go to their tax bill. It helps us out a lot to budget, and it makes it fair for all residents. Also, I want to thank Sal and Jason for all the hard work they did with the tree lighting last night. It was gorgeous as usual. There's a lot of hard work that goes into it by those two departments and their staff, and it's always a great affair. Our young man that turned the lights on was a delight, and so happy, and that he was chosen, and he was definitely in need of his more than two front teeth, so that was very cute. Also want to thank Stacy and the staff, and my deputy who does a lot of preparation all year long to get ready for the audit, and it makes it go really smooth, so I don't think people realize how much work goes into that. Also, I think she left a little bit of something out. Usually, there's always something that they tell us that we can improve on. This year, they didn't have anything. We got an okay award, so we did not even get a little hint of something that we needed to improve on, so that was quite impressive. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't usually follow up to comments, but Treasurer Goodhue, I think that student was just as happy to meet Santa Claus based on the picture, so that was a great moment.
Thank you. Under Clerk's comments, I just wanted to let everyone know that if you are interested in running for local office in 2020, the candidate filing packet is now available on the website under the Clerk's Department slash Elections tab, or you can pick up a packet during business hours at the Clerk's Office. The 2020 filing deadline is April 21st at 4:00 PM. So with this meeting ending so early, which is unusual for us, it sounds like a lot of people are congested, so I suggest you all take Therapflu and go to bed early. That's all I have. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Busenow, supported by Treasurer Goodhue, to adjourn at 7:41 this evening. Have a good night. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries.